Hi, Mayor. It's not easy to be here tonight, so that's good enough for me. Okay, uh, roll call?
Mayor Conley Ball. Vice Mayor Bill Costner.
Here.
Alderman John Bug.
Here.
Alderman Freddie Gregg.
Here.
Alderwoman Kathy Hope.
Here.
Alderman Kenny Morgan.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
Do you have a quorum, sir?
I have a motion approved in the minutes of the previous meeting for regular session of December thirteenth, two thousand and eleven.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. All in favor, sir? Aye. Number four. Proclamation and recognition of citizens by the mayor. As for the recognition of city employee, Scott.
Mr. Vice Mayor, as you know, we've started the Employee of the Month, and this is our third recipient. But before we call the recipient up, I'd like to ask Randy Hensley, Director of the Admiral Shelter, please come forward and make the presentation on behalf of the mayor and alderman.
I'm very happy to work at the shelter group for the last six months, but I never realized what my friend had with me, which is a coworker. Lisa, you are the greatest person in the world. She's always there to help out. She'll stay. She works Saturdays, Sundays, four o'clock in the morning calls for the police department. She'll do anything she can to help. And I just want to present you as this byline with the city and city council and a small compliment I've ever had to you. Thank you. We love you.
Lisa.
Yeah, I love her. Thank you all.
Okay, number five is a report from the city minister, Scott Cox.
Vice Mayor, Lord, I have very, uh, a couple of things to report on. Number one, if schedules permit, we would like to have a workshop-style meeting next Tuesday, January seventeenth, at five o'clock, to discuss the 2010 audit findings. And also, there will be a bid opening on January twenty-fourth at twelve noon in regard to the environmental cleanup of the Tanner Building. And the last thing I have to report is the Safe Routes to School Project is under review by the state at this time. And once they approve our specs and contract documents, we'll be authorized to go to bid on that. One last thing. The year two thousand and eleven, you know, was both challenging and very productive. And we've been reviewing everything to see how we can move forward and make progress since two thousand and twelve. And in the review, it's quite amazing, all the accomplishments that were conducted. So at the next council meeting, I'm planning on putting together, with your office permission, of course, I'm planning on putting together a slideshow that will start from the day you were sworn in in January of two thousand and eleven and end with Santa Land of the year. There was a lot really went on, and once you see it on the presentation, it comes to light pretty well. So that's all, sir.
Okay, thank you. What's the date on that? Tuesday?
Tuesday, five o'clock, January seventeenth, next Tuesday.
Next on the chair?
Five.
And the bid was the twenty-fourth, right?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is point of the boards, commission committees, and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ball has recommended back for the Department of Service, Board Willie Green, and he's agreed to go back with having a motion approved. Mr. Green, I'll make a motion.
I'll second him.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. As Mr. Green is going back. Any reports from the committee of members of the city council, or whatever, I'll see if they have anything to say. Nothing in old business. New business, second reading of ordinance, number twenty-eleven dash twelve for Newport Grammar School budget, amend it. I have a motion.
Yes, Vice Mayor, I need to read the heading of the ordinance into the record and put the record its ordinance number two thousand and eleven dash twelve, an ordinance to amend Newport Grammar School's budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eleven, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sir. If you want a roll call vote, you should.
Probably.
Okay, roll call vote.
Alderman John Bug.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bill Costner.
Yes.
Alderman Freddie Gregg.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kathy Hope.
Yes.
Alderman Kenny Morgan.
Yes.
And then the second ordinance likewise is ordinance number two thousand and eleven dash thirteen. Again, it's an ordinance to amend Newport Grammar School's budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eleven, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a second.
My second.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Alderman Gregg.
Yes.
Alderwoman Hope.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Costner.
Yes.
I got consent agenda, roadblock for the true light for Baptist Church of God of Americas. And that's the new motion on the end, but may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, next is bid first expenses. That's for the luminous and pole bids for the Riverwalk project. We need that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor and board. We've received one bid in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety cents. It does meet the bid requirements, bid specifications, and also, it can be paid for within the Parks and Recreation Budget parameters.
We're just going to roll call. Do we have a motion?
Your office approval.
Do I have a motion? Motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, another, any comments from citizens?
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, given the time, it's a two thousand and twelve time, twenty times now, we're looking for this, uh, service providers. Partly, we worked very hard on that with Officer Hayden. We'll be doing assessment and then what we can to help situation with the needs of by the escorting to do it now. We're going to get in, and we're going to screen and prevent you protection that sit in place where I would ask, if anybody else asks you these questions, and if you say yes, then I stop. If you say no, then I would do a count. And this will be a twenty-four hour period from the twenty-sixth. But we'll hopefully, we'll get a real good count of the driven homeless or some of them have been homeless four times in the past three years or anything like that. But once I get those numbers right, so we get our fire share of the federal funding to help work with these people to provide the services we need to provide. So we will be cooperating from the police department with that. And I also want to let y'all know that we have ordered the video cameras with grants from the Denver Highway Safety Officer at the end. But hopefully, by the end of March, we'll have all new video cameras in our patrol cars. And we pay to those through grants and then funding through federal asset sharing and...
Thanks, Sheriff. I'm sorry about that. Any other comments from citizens?
I have a comment. Here, I stand, one month later, and you asked me a question, and how concerned about the Tanner Building. I understand the bids have come out and what happened. My question is, when the bids come in, it's going to be another month before you decide who's going to do the cleanup. How soon is the cleanup going to start? And how long will the cleanup be? Can anybody answer that question? I have a lot of people, everywhere I go in this town, people ask me, I'm not going to question, when is the Tanner Building going to be open? We started a circular lady named petition Friday. I have over two hundred names on this petition I read. There are other petitions out there that people are concerned, and they want to know when cleanup is going to start on the building. I understand that we're concerned about health issues, and we certainly want the building cleaned up. But we don't see anything, we don't hear anything. The last couple of weeks, we've gotten some information, but, you know, I'm still... My answer to their question is, I don't know. So I think it would be prudent of us to capture those people's names so that you know that it's just not me wanting to see that building repaired. So can anybody answer any of those questions?
I'll make a comment. I think everybody, everyone said, oh, Carleen, I think that given the circumstances that you have an environmental situation, I don't think there's any other reason. I really believe that everything's been done and being done, given the progression of the whole, from the tornado to now. I mean, I don't think anybody planned on any of this. So I really believe we're doing all we can do. It is where it's at. Until the bids come in, until the company gets in here to clean it up, there's not much we can do.
And Harley, it's not fair to... I know you want to make it out like we're the bad guys, and we're not. We're doing everything we can. That's the honest truth. But it's also not fair to expect the city to take the risk of putting other people's life in jeopardy or their health in hazard, because the city certainly doesn't want anyone to get sick because of something that we know about, and we're trying to convey along to you. But we are doing the best we can. But we don't hear any of that. We don't hear any updates. We don't see, uh, last day, uh, Sunday was in the paper. I understand, I did not see that. And today, something was in the paper. But from last month, there's no, there's no information out there, and people are beginning to generate rumors. And they're coming to me, and I don't want to assume that it's you guys or the bad guys. But I have no, I have nothing to say to them other than I'm not... Well, rumors are going to circulate regardless. You can't stop people from talking. But that doesn't mean that everything they say is true. And with that being said, I mean, like Kenny said, it is what it is. And at this point, it's a health hazard.
There's only going to be so many updates. I mean, it's not like you're going to have a daily update on this. I mean, it's just like the bids. I mean, they're not going to be here for another couple of weeks.
And the city has their business.
Then you have the process, I mean, there's a process to all that. And I mean, that's, that's the information. I mean, there's nothing going to change over the next two weeks till the bids are open, and then there's a process that... And there could be, I guess, weekly updates on the cleanup, as that goes along, but I wouldn't, unless the company gives those, then I don't think the city hall would even have that information.
Well, how long will it take you to decide?
Once they...
Who's going to get the bid?
Well, it's a little bid, I guess, low qualified bid.
Yes.
When they open them, I mean, it'll be whoever the qualified bidder is that's got the lowest bid, more than likely. So, is there a timeframe on the bid qualifications, Scott?
No, sir, ahead.
Because they don't want to get into, basically, when they go in there, so...
Will the EPA come in first?
Environmental, I would say they'll clear it.
They will finalize it, yes.
So I mean, I think, given the history of the building, it's taken a little longer, and I think everybody realized that, that going back to the water leaks, going back to the building, being hit with a tornado, all the damage, I think we're doing it the right way this time. I think we're trying our best to do it the right way.
But you can understand...
I realize the frustration, Carleen. I sit on your board, I promise you.
But you can understand that, that general public has a native opinion about the upkeep of the building anyway. So it's always been a battle to make sure that that building...
I disagree with you, but what I will say is this, and I know Linda's sitting back or somewhere, it has gotten better and better than it was four, five years ago. Now, is it perfect? No. But I think this city council is working, along with city hall, to try to make it better. Obviously, we don't have a whole bunch of monies, but as we can, we put money into it. I think you'd agree to that, that we're trying. But just, I think Kathy said it, I mean, we're trying, we're on your side. This isn't we versus them. It's just, it is what it is, and we have to move it along, but there's a process to it. And I thought, I mean, if anything I could do, or I think Scott or you know, here, that we do it, but it's just, I mean, you got mold in the building.
And that's EPA. An EPA, you know, if you're not sitting on the board, go through all this process, we can't go over EPA. I mean, we're, just like Kenny said, he's on your board, we understand your problem, but we turn it over, and next y'all go right back in there. The first person that got sick, we know better. We know better. We have to go through the government, the government regulations. All that money we put into it, it's government regulation. You know how it is, it's a process. It just takes time. We're trying.
And it's too risky, Carleen. It's a risky process that the city taxpayers don't need right now, but it can be avoided at the very front.
And the rumor is that we have FEMA money back. We don't have FEMA money back.
We don't have...
I wish we did, it'd make life a lot easier.
Well, why is that? Because of the...
Yeah, they haven't reimbursed us anything yet. When they do, we have money to play with, you know what I mean? But we don't have anything back from FEMA. The rumor is out there, that we do have money from FEMA, we don't.
Well, let me just say, to put on record, I'm not putting rumors out there either. People are asking me questions, and my answer to them is, I don't know. So I'm just here to stand before the council and ask the question, you know, so we can get some information out there. I tried to see, look at the paper and see whatever's printed there. But I don't know if they see the paper, but usually somebody will tell me that something... And I certainly didn't see what was in Sunday's paper, but everybody got something in Sunday's. Stay in line.
You know, and I think it's like a puzzle. It, when you see it, when you see it finished, you know, the before picture, when I went in that building, there's selling tile hanging everywhere. And when the environmental people come in and take a piece of ceiling tile out, it don't look bad until they take it out. When they take it out, they see mold over them, they gotta take care of that. The finishing work on that building is going to be, you'll just be surprised. I mean, it don't leak anymore. But we got to take care of the problem of the mold, and that's... Even at the funeral home one time, there was an environmental man came in, and I opened up a closet, had at best a center, they taped everything up, you gotta, we can't do nothing here to be, take it away, and it's gone. But that building's been up since nineteen twenty-nine. Tanner Building, I don't know how old it is.
Nineteen twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so that, that, those stuff in it needs to be taken care of.
And if we hadn't been trying, there wouldn't be a new roof on the building right now.
The city would not want to be liable for somebody to go in and say, "Well, we'll just patch it up and put you in." And somebody gets sick, guess who's liable? Say it in your bar.
Agencies that were in here.
Do you have a...
There was no there, obviously.
Yes. So that's the fact. We know it's our, we got to do something about it. And this is process, we got the paper, and it might take another year, but we don't know. But when you come back, it's going to pass all inspections, it's going to be a nice build.
Another year.
Well, I don't know. It might be a year, it might be six weeks.
I think he's saying, Carleen, he don't know, he just saying it could be.
Nobody knows.
They may get in and run into something else, who knows? I mean, nobody knows till it's done.
And we're not tired left down, and there's no playoff award, and so... Main thing, we're going to try to fix it. Any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment. My office was relocated two months earlier, too, and I was going to give the paper. Asking the council to consider putting a crosswalk or some kind of safety lane from my office over to the other side where modern work is. Somebody's going to be killed there. I don't know, there's, I wasn't aware of the tremendous amount of traffic and traffic trailer that come through here until I actually relocated my office there. It's amazing, the number of people and vehicles that come, and it's virtually impossible, or it's like a video game, you know, when you're trying to get to my office. Because a lot of people will park in my corner space at my office and try to walk across the street to get the insurance. And it's becoming increasingly dangerous. I was wondering whether crosswalk kept or...
Do you want to address it?
It's virtually impossible without going through T dot and get a crosswalk on the State Highway. And we've been trying to get one of yours to cordial since the red light was removed. And it, you know...
How long did it take to get the crosswalk over from me to the river? That's a crosswalk that was marked out yesterday, we serviced the road again.
Back to city street.
That's right. If that's on the city street, we can regulate, but if it's T dot, then that's a T dot job.
Somebody's going to get, I have a client, and I almost got one of them.
Can they not go around the Riverwalk, which walks under the Red Town, and come right back up over there?
Uh, I don't know if they would have access.
The T dot plan that's supposed to be initiated in February, at the last word we had from Nashville, does call for crosswalks. I will double check. Amanda, I think there's one already scheduled to go there, but I will double check, and if there's not, we'll see if they can amend their plan.
Scott Roberts, did you say it's in the plan?
I'm not one hundred percent sure. I know there is on Broadway and McMahon, so I'll double check, because it should be there if the railroad crossing.
Any other comments?
Hi there, um, I just wanted to say that all people are sick, that it's a mold in the Tanner Building. Partially, that's because the cleanup didn't happen shortly after the tornado. I was staying at a farmer's market last year, and I was going in the building sometimes to get things, and it was standing water in the building. I must stay for at least three or four months. So it is partially due to the neglect of the city that that mold problem is so serious. And I think right now, we have this wonderful opportunity to move forward and reopen the Tanner Building, build a much better partnership between the building's residents and the city. I mean, I know there's been a lot of issues in the past. And I think, you know, I just wanted to let you know that I feel that Carleen's had to be speaking for the Tanner Building this whole time, you know? And there are a lot more people that want to see the Tanner Building reopened, and they care deeply about it. And people all over East Tennessee and historical preservation societies. So I think, I just want to remind you, this is an opportunity, you don't have to set up this dichotomy between the city council and the residents of the Tanner Building. This is an opportunity to work together. This is an opportunity to make a building an even better thriving place. It was a thriving place when things weren't good in there, and we didn't have toilet paper, and the roof was leaking. It was still a thriving place, and it can be again. And I just want to remind you all of that. And I know that the adult high school was a problem, and his back got flipped up really quickly. And just remember that his nonprofit, that started the community here in Clark County, provided great service.
Okay, now, with that being said, yes, the high school was a priority. They had insurance. For the high school to get all their work done, they paid five thousand dollars. That was their copay, and the insurance covered every bit of that work. That had nothing to do with the city.
Okay, money is an issue. Maybe we can do a fundraiser or something.
Pay rent.
Well, I want to address one thing. Back to the water standing there for three or four months, there was a safety hazard with the building that we had to have engineers come in and check before you could even get in the building to do anything. So we weren't going to put anybody in there and be at risk of the building collapsing, because that's essentially what we're up against here. Can elaborate on it some more if you'd like, but essentially, we had to wait on the engineering report before we could even get in the building to address any issues. So I don't think it was neglect on the city's behalf only. I think more so that it was, again, we had to wait on an engineering firm to give us an answer before it was even safe on the building, because the wall had allegedly separated back in the back, and we didn't know the building was going to collapse. So that part was, again, I think we were doing everything we could do at the time, and the water did cause some problems, but it also has been a big snowball going down the hill, and we're just trying to do the best we can do. And it's, again, I say, it is what it is. I mean, it's a process, it's a, it's an old building. We've tried, and we're continuing to try. We're trying to find the monies, we're trying to fix it.
Money is an issue. We might be able to find money through the historical preservation societies to get the Tanner Building back.
I would encourage you to talk to Scott about that, give him, try to... I mean, I'm okay with raising any money, if you can do it. I know the economy's tight, so...
With her saying that, I know for a fact that I have given two applications for Rosenwald grants for two years, and I'm glad to see you kind of went off the city for those. They give away money through those every year.
Does it have to be through the city, or can it be through yours?
It has to be through the owners of the building. And I'm giving that to the city for two years. But Shadina, would it, would it, would Rosenwald grant pertain to that building because the windows have been changed and... Yes, it was, because it's a Rosenwald building, it's a... Because I thought it was, my understanding, that the building has to be as close to... That's the national registry, this is something totally different. This is the Rosenwald Fund.
And we did apply in twenty-ten, and were denied funding through the Rosenwald Fund.
They closed it real quick, and it wasn't really thorough things, what you probably said. They've done that for years. But that may be a popcor, that you're saying?
Yes, sir.
I'm not from Clark County, I'm from Georgetown. And I wanted to present, we've got letters from academics and historians, who are interested in the historical preservation of the Tanner Building. I just want to present these letters to the city, universities, and social justice organizations, all over Appalachian, and not just with historical preservation of it. And I don't want to set up this narcotic with the city. People who want to save the building and see its government. I just want to show the three to support.
I think we've been through this time and again, and Shadina has proven time and again that I don't think the intent is to tear the building down. I don't know where the rumor's starting, but I can speak, I think safely for about... I don't think anybody's tearing the building down.
It's got a new roof on it, and it has two new heat and air units on it. I don't think the intention was ever to tear the building down.
Works for X-Men after summer fixing the landscaping and redone stuff, so I...
We were from mine show, that's all I think.
And there are other historic buildings in this town, such as the Memorial Building, but with the economy as it is, we can't keep putting money in historic buildings over and over, two and three hundred thousand dollars, when the money isn't there. And that's what our argument is.
Well, we would be interested in helping fundraise for the city.
Well, thank you, we appreciate you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, just, I think that the perception is the building's been torn down. That's not the case, I don't think, so...
Any other comments? Ms. Brown?
Yes. I'm here on behalf of Brown Casket and Insurance. I mean, we were here last month, and we're concerned about not being able to access our business. The Greenway blocks our business. If the Brown Funeral Home is having a funeral, we can't get in or out. And our only way in right now is through the Brown Funeral Home parking lot. We've always come around city hall and gone through that way. So we're here to request that you move some of the barriers so that we can get through. We have spoken to Neil Hanson, who's over T dot in Nashville, and he has told us on more than one occasion that you cannot use federal money to block a business. And we are supposed to let him know how this is turning out. So, so far, we haven't had any communication with anyone on the council, and we would just like to know if you have come up with any solution, anything that you can do to help us get in and out of a business. We don't want to close, been there for a long time. My husband has lived on that river his entire life, and his family started Brown Funeral Home in nineteen twenty-nine. So, you know, we have no intentions of moving. So, uh, you know, we, uh, have no intentions of moving, and we would like to see how you can help us be able to access our building.
Now, number one, I believe I've got a little power over, uh, Brown Funeral Home as of today. You will not be blocked in. You will be able to drive through Brown Funeral Home parking lot, I promise you that right now. You will not be blocked in.
Well, we...
You've got a way in, and you've got a way out.
Well, that hasn't been true for the past while, because when you have people, if you're receiving friends, we can't get in and out, because they also use our parking lot, in which that's fine, we don't mind them parking back there. But when the cars are all parked back there, we can't go anywhere. So, we don't have a way in and out. A simple solution is move one of the barriers so we can get through.
The only problem with moving the barriers, the buyer's car, there's a sign right next to the buyer, that the, to the thing says, no traffic is to be on the Riverwalk. If it'd been real simple, this would have probably never come up. If Mr. Brown would have went ahead and gone and let, let him go behind him, and he wouldn't have to worry about it.
Well, that ship sailed, so, uh, he's not going to do that. So, what we need to know is what you're going to do, because we don't want you to lose federal funding. And we don't want to endanger any money that would come to the city. But on the other hand, that's a local decision. Uh, we have been told by the state, by the person, uh, who is in charge of greenways, and the person who is in charge of T dot, that you cannot block a business. You cannot do that. We know you can't drive over a greenway, but you should have thought about that before you put the barriers there. Uh, talking about what should have been done and what could have been done, when you've been promised one thing, and that didn't happen, you know, we, we need to come up with a solution. And we're here to talk to you about that and see how we can help each other.
Can we set up a meeting with you and Mr. Brown at our next workshop? Can you skip, we'll have Scott contact you and set the date.
Okay.
We just need to sit down, talk this over, see if we can work this out, still drag a lot of moat out.
We would love to do that. And in fact, we can even contact Mr. Hanson if you would like for him to come here, because I'm sure he wants to be kept informed and...
Just whatever you will do, we just need to sit down and ask adults to get this...
Exactly, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, let's try that. Right now. This is an easy thing to rectify. All we've got to do is two curbs, I was split, split right back there two months ago, and I was told that those two curbs would not be there unless I was told different. Now, the person that told me that, nobody knows who told him different, that those curbs would not be placed there, that they were placed, and then two days after I was told that those curbs, I would have twelve feet to hit to access my property. But that did not happen. And I could list another half dozen things that I was told that weren't true. And, and for somebody to say that if it were mine, I'd give it to them, well, that's easy for anybody to say, if it were mine, I'd give it to you. If that were my car, I'd give it to the bowling club. Get you to turn around and say, hey, it's not your car. So, it's just so easy to rectify a problem, and all we've got to do is eliminate two curbs. We'll sit down and talk this out. Thank you, Frank.
But also, I, I will tell you this, and I know right now the city is liable for anything that would happen around that area. On more than two or three occasions, when they're receiving friends at Brown Funeral Home, it's been a common practice for a hundred years for cars to drive around behind our building and exit by the police station, and they're still doing that. And they're driving over the curbs, and Tim has even gone out a couple of times and tried to straighten them back up. And, you know, and I think they've even hit the, uh, one of the rails back there, so.
That's what we need to sit down and work this out, as I could go.
Okay.
I believe we can come some kind of solution.
Okay, we appreciate your consideration.
I'll have Scott make sure, contact y'all.
Okay.
Uh, next... Very, very...
You have our number, okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I have one, maybe you've been charged of placing drains on City Street.
Drains.
Okay, how do you go about that? Um, I, my cousin, Delby, the handy, there's a two on that mountain view, and she has been bombarded with water running from Jerkington, um, Mineral Street, White Oak, to Martin. Some of you would have time and a grain, if you have to stop by the house and leave at that park.
Mr. Hibs, Ben, you know what you're talking about?
It's still on that mountain, you sure?
You check that out?
I said, part of some, to get some streets, it's, it's virtually there, and muddy, it, it was very difficult even to get into their home, and that's been going on for some time.
Mr. Ben, if you'll look at him.
Contact them or, it's like I've already brought it up, so who...
Okay, we'll, we'll get back to that with Ben, let's try to get that through. Anybody else?
I'm just saying, what happened to their Christmas decorations? I saw two in front of the board, and I'm gonna have them next year, 'cause I thought we won't be able to put them on, and it's shopping, it's really Christmas Eve.
I can't answer, 'cause I don't know what to say. Scott, you have one?
The Christmas decorations that were put up last year were in such disrepair that it caused more complaints than compliments. So, the decision was made this year to simply put up the wreaths, and then this will be an issue that'll be presented to council in the next year's budget.
Well, I will say this, a couple of years ago, um, we discussed buying new ones, because they were so bad, and the vocational building agreed to do a lot of the repairs, and we got another couple of years out of that, so I'd say it's his time.
He's still doing that.
So, I thought it was a certain, you know, the vocational people were getting experience and doing some good, and sending some money out. John, there's only so much for a parent you can do.
Well, there, there does beyond repair, it's beyond, biggest town, but they're bound to be repaired.
John, there's only so much for a parent you can do.
Well, there, there does beyond repair, it's beyond, biggest town, but they're bound to be repaired.
Well, maybe we get all the business people, and if we figure out to get some money, but, yeah, I'll come back to money.
But we love Christmas.
Any other comments, uh, uh, citizens? I have a motion to adjourn.